Even everybody now, it's really, really, really quiet. So many familiar faces on this call, so I'm not going to get a chance to say hello to all of you individually. So but a big hello that we have over one hundred and forty five people on the call already. And I gotta tell you, this is so much better than just about a year ago today. When we were on the Zoom together and I was giving people the bad news about camp being canceled. So tonight I'm here to give the good news that we're about to have an amazing summer at Telluride and. So thank you for being here. Thanks for your patience. I know that some of some other camps and other programs came out earlier with their with their protocols. And a lot of people were calling saying, David, what are we doing? What are we doing? And I'm so glad we waited. And one reason we waited for these findings that are protocols was because we were waiting for the state of New York. To which just told us this past Wednesday what we could and couldn't do. So we wanted to have those in place. And while that was very frustrating, waiting for New York to tell us, it also was very helpful because as they waited. Things got better and created there were more opportunities being creative for what can look like this summer. And so the protocols that I said just a little earlier today, which will go over in depth in just a few moments. Are based on where we are today and not based where we would have been a month ago. Some of our staff is up at camp already getting ready and they're trying to figure out what to do with the ten thousand masks that were donated to camp. Three months ago, thinking that we would need ten thousand masks, so needs a mask. Don't worry, we'll use some of them, but. And the ten thousand bottles of hand sanitizer. So many things that we thought a month ago, two months ago, three months ago. Have changed, but not everything has changed. So tonight, what I'd like to do is take a few minutes and go through with you what camp is going to like as we understand it right now. We think we're pretty at a pretty good point now where we understand what camp's gonna look like, could be a few, still a few changes. We're going to talk about the protocols. Here's what we're sort of not gonna do. We're not gonna have a conversation online about science. And about the efficacy of vaccines. And if people need them or don't need them, I know we have people in this community are on different, different sides about these issues. That's not going to be the discussion we have this evening. We're not gonna have, we're not really gonna have a discussion about these protocols, except to answer questions about them. We have reached a point with the tremendous help of us of the medical experts we're working with. Of coming up that we think are really solid set of plans to keep camp both safe, but also to make camp camp. We are incredibly blessed this year more than ever with being a teenage camp. A teenage means that. At this point, based on the survey we set out, we're expecting ninety five percent of the campers to be vaccinated. And ninety nine percent of the staff to be vaccinated. That is not something we expected even three weeks ago. And it is a game changer. In the most important way, it's a game changer regardless of what our rules are, because it means that people are just gonna be safer. That's the bottom line. People are gonna be safer. Nothing's a hundred percent. We know that. But overall, people will be safer this summer because of that. And I am incredibly grateful to be running a teen only summer camp at the moment, being able to do that. So before we get started, I wanted to just introduce a few people who are on this call. First of all, I work with this amazing, amazing team of people. Many of you have spoken to different ones of them over the past year, two years, ten years, twenty years. Up at camp right now already is Isabel Joseph. Who many of you speak to about forms, about money, about everything. She is our administrative god. Still trying to figure out the right term. Tonight, it's tonight, it's administrative god. Please be patient. We are trying to. Process about three thousand forms right now. She's got a little bit of help, but is a lot of work. We actually look at the forums when you send them in. By the way, reminder, get your forms in. So Isabel's up at camp already, phones are going, she's there along with her at the camp is No Walker. Yeah, if you came on, you're not muted, please mute. Up at camp also is No Walker. Say hi, No Walker.
Hello, hello.
Many of you know No Walker from his Rockstar days that are still continuing. Now he has the hair for it because he never got a haircut during COVID. Your kids will not know, they'll see him playing every Saturday night this summer, just like every other summer. And he's our operations director. He's doing a lot of things behind the scenes to make camp run, working with a whole team of people right now at the camp. You know, camp's been closed for two years, so they are they're mopping and sweeping and dusting and moving books around and getting everything ready, putting computers in place. You know, so reopening. And then finally going up to camp on Sunday is Mac Lindner. Mac, say hi. Max, our Max, our assistant director and his hands are always in the staffing and the program and those areas. He has once again. In the most difficult of years, put together this phenomenal staff of people. In a year where a lot of young don't wanna work in summer camps and a year where we can't get anybody from the UK to come, we can't get people from New York to come. Still, he tells me today, we much have everything filled. But if any of you want to have a job in housekeeping this summer, please let me know, we can use a few people. But otherwise, we are in great shape. So I am privileged to work with these three folks all year. We've been working virtually. But tonight, I'm sitting here in our New York City office packing it up. For the things we brought back at the end of the summer twenty nineteen and throwing it in my car and then driving up to camp on Sunday also, and it is game on. Our staff is arriving and we are getting camp ready. So I can't even tell you what a thrill it is to be talking this way tonight. And not the way, I think I was crying on the on this call exactly a year ago. I also want to give a shout out. There's a few members of our Telluride Board on the phone, including Fanny Corman, who's our board chair. Fanny's waving over there. The Telluride Board has been this phenomenal source of strength and support as we've worked through these last two years. Allowing us to get to this moment we're in right now. And so we couldn't do any of this without their support. So real, real thankful to to Fanny and Rogers on the call. I think I saw some of their names of board members on the call as well. So thank you all, board members for joining. And two people, I know one is on the call, I'm not sure what the other one is, but but two people have just been incredibly helpful as we've moved through this period of time as our as our medical experts. I just want. About the two people who have been informing us, advising us, consulting with us as well, some other doctors as well, but one is Dr. Susan Albert. Who I think is not on the call yet, but hopefully will join us. Susan is a YJ alum. She was on your course back in the early sixties.
I'm here.
You are Susan, great. Susan Albert. Susan is a by training a microbiologist and pediatric infectious disease specialist. She spent thirteen years FDA regulating anti-infectant drugs and then medical devices. So also working device industry responsible for global regulatory affairs for different sized companies. And after retiring, didn't retire, but became a consultant to diagnostic and therapeutic device companies, many from Israel, bringing those products to the United States. She also serves on the Young J Global Board and just tremendous, tremendous source of support for us. And Dr. Joel Ackelsberg, who's here, is a parent of a recent TY camper and your course participant. Lives in Montclair, New Jersey, where I live. He's a medical epidemiologist at the New York State Department, New York City Department of Health, sorry. He's been at New York City DOH since two thousand nine, the bioterrorism surveillance coordinator and medical director. For emergency readiness and response unit. I know he's been responsible for a lot of the COVID protocols. For for private schools in New York City. So we have been in constant contact with with these people who are able to give us the science, give us really the need. We've had a few other people we've been working with as well. And so I'm really thanking them and I want you to know, like, everything we're about to say, we're doing this summer, we've run through them. And you know, without them saying, yes, I'm not, I'm not moving unless they say yes. I am not a doctor. So, okay, so we'll start. I'm gonna share my screen. And I'm gonna walk through what these protocols look like. I emailed them out just a little while ago this evening. I don't know why I'm seeing orally Goldfeld screen though. Okay, thank you orally for your screen. But this is the one I wanna show. My team thinks orange is a really nice color, so I thought I'd put it on the background for for today. So let me start, actually, before I go through these core assumptions. How did we get to this point? We had been waiting, as I said, for the New York State Department of Health to release their guidelines for operating summer camps. The CDC had released theirs a while back. They're actually releasing another version of them soon. We, the American Camp Association, had to release all sorts of guidance for running summer camps, but we had to wait for the New York State Department of Health. Because we legally operate under them, under them. Some of the rules and protocols we'll be talking about today are state rules. There is not a negotiation to be had about them. They are what the state is requiring. We are expecting they will be coming in as in past years and checking closely that we have followed these. I want you to know, two summers ago, if you were with camp with us, we had to make sure everybody's original copies of his original measles vaccines. Because the state was requiring it. They are again this year, by the way, and we'll talk about that later. But they came in and they sat there and they went through the computer and books, checking everybody's records. And we're expecting the same will be true this year. We'll talk in a few moments about three documents that you must have one of. Given to us before your child comes to camp. That is a on a conversation. So we received these on May nineteenth, last week, last Wednesday, twenty three pages of tiny print. If anybody wants the. The URL happy to send it to you. If you wanna dig into it as well, enjoy yourself. It's great reading. We had about twenty meetings since then and we have been just digesting this. And we asked, what does this mean for us at Telluride? How do we follow all of these protocols? And also have a great summer. And remember that ninety five percent vaccinated community allows us to feel a certain amount of security we might not have felt just even a couple of months ago. So there's sort of five core assumptions that we are basing these these protocols. One is we believe we can operate safely. We know nothing in the world is a hundred percent. But we believe we're at a point right now with the science, with the vaccinations and with these protocols that we can operate safely. Number two, as I've said before, overwhelming majority of campers and staff will be vaccinated. Telluride, it's been a requirement for staff. We have some, we have a medical exception for one staff member working that person, but we require requiring them on staff. We are not requiring campers to get vaccinated and some of you are probably wondering why I've gotten probably twenty messages in the past week. Aren't you gonna require everybody gets vaccinated? And I want to explain why we're not. The first and most important thing is we have campers coming from parts of the parts of the world. Where's under sixteen year olds cannot get vaccinated. So for instance, we have at least six Israeli campers coming, two Mexican campers and one Costa Rican camper. In none of those countries is it available for under sixteen year olds yet. We believe Israel will open up probably next week, but it won't be enough time. So that's number one. We certainly weren't going to make this decision and 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 not have Israeli campers, especially after what just happened the past couple of weeks in Israel. Not to now be able to come to camp. And we do have some other campers who have not yet decided to get vaccinated or not to get vaccinated. And we have some people who at this point aren't planning on getting vaccinated. We're not having a conversation with anybody about the science of vaccinations. I personally am very happy that almost everybody will be vaccinated. I will sleep better at night. Knowing that. And I do believe strongly by next summer, it will be just like we require every vaccine to Telluride. We don't have any choices of vaccinations. I believe by next summer will be mandatory. If it was April first and not the end of May, we might be having a different conversation. But again, overwhelming majority, we sat that survey, I was surprised when I saw ninety five percent of campers saying they will be vaccinated. Number three, COVID hasn't gone away. It still exists. And we have people coming from different communities and there's still COVID in those communities. So we're not done. But we were, then obviously we wouldn't have any of these protocols. Number four, testing is available. We'll talk in a few moments about who's gonna get text tested. It's a lot fewer people than originally thought. And we do not believe that any of the cost of this test will be passed on to parents. So we're working with a testing company. Those of you have campers at Sprout Lake working with the same company, we just have a different set of protocols we're doing with it that Sprout Lake is. But they are able to charge your insurance and and then if there are any co-pays, they waive them because there is enough, I guess, revenue coming in. And then if we have under underinsured campers or international campers, they just won't charge them. So we're able to do testing. I will tell you. Two months ago, I thought we were gonna spend fifty thousand dollars on testing this summer. And now I believe it'll be just a few thousand dollars, huge change. And finally, and most importantly. We seek to be. And at the very best, we are a community of people responsible for one another. And so we're going to be really relying on camper, staff and parents to agree to these protocols. To ensure the safety and the experience of everybody at camp. So I'll say this right at the beginning, as we go through this, if this does not feel comfortable to you. If this doesn't feel like we're being safe enough, or if you feel like we're being overly cautious or or not cautious enough, either one. We will provide a full refund for the next week. If you choose to cancel. Okay, I don't want anything to be about the money. I want people to feel comfortable with what we're doing. So please, within the next week, full refund, no questions asked, if you don't feel comfortable with what we're doing. So let me dig in. What do you need to do before your camper arrives at camp? And this has changed from what we said, you know, back in March, because it's changed. You need to have one of three things. Your camper needs to have one of three things uploaded to them. I tell you who they're also called Camp and Touch. That's where all your forms are on our website. If you need help with that, Isabel, our staff will help you. You need to have one of three things. There are no other things, but these three things. A negative diagnostic test result. For COVID nineteen, you can read the specifics, the PCR test. Or a nuclear acid amplification test, not a rapid test. And it needs to be performed and collected within seventy two hours of arrival at camp. So now I'm gonna speak to the Sprout Lake parents for a moment. The, I know through Sprout Lake, you're getting the tests in the mail. They they are not able to turn around those around seventy two hours for us. So we are not doing it that way. We're asking you to go out to your Walgreens, to your CVS, most places you are right now. And if you're flying for another country, you have to do this anyway. You need to do that test. You should do it seventy two hours before you're coming. And then you'll get the results within twenty four to forty eight hours and upload them to the website. Don't bring them with you, upload them to the website. The second possibility can be proof of having completed the COVID nineteen vaccination. At least fourteen days prior to the arrival of camp. So if your second shot was after June tenth. You need, you should upload the vaccine card, but also the negative PCR test results. That is a state definition of what it means to be vaccinated. A fully vaccinated individual arrives at camp. Having been vaccinated, having had their second shot two weeks before camp begins. So I just, I beg you to not say, hey, it's June, it was June eleventh. Is that okay? It's not okay. Okay, June tenth is the final date for the second test. Now this will be. It'll be fine later on. We'll explain how that's gonna work later on, because they will be fully vaccinated within hopefully the first few days of camp. The third possibility. Is documentation of laboratory confirmed COVID nineteen test within the previous three months. I know I've spoken to a few folks who have whose kids have had COVID five, six, seven, ten months ago. That doesn't count for the state. You still need the negative PCR test or the vaccine. I know there are some people hesitant to get a vaccine after their, after having had COVID. I understand that. We're not gonna have a discussion about the science around that, but you need the negative PCR test. I put this in bold, where nobody can enter the grounds and tell you who to that these three documents. By the way, same as your staff. This is by state law. We will be shut down. And my number one priority after the safety of your kids is the safety and and the well-being of Telluride as an institution. So again, I'm gonna say it, because I wanna be clear, you gotta have one of three things. You gotta have that negative diagnostic test, PCR. Test or you can read the rest of what that means. It's gotta be seventy two hours before. Don't do it four days before. Don't do it five days before. Don't use the Sprout Lake test. That's a five day before test. Or you gotta have the vaccine and upload that card, you know, there's a, and by the way, on our website, you can upload any, any or all of these three documents as a place to upload all of them. Or the documentation of the laboratory confirmed COVID nineteen test. Okay, those are our pre-arrival requirements. There is also on the Camp and Touch, my Telluride website. When you log in, there's a pre-arrival screening. Some questions on there about who you've been around, you've been to many big parties, you've been around people with COVID, everybody needs to complete that, whether you're vaccinated or not. So please go through that. We need that information as well. I'm, because I've got, only because I've gotten so many questions about this. There are no, there's nothing else but these three things. Okay, just wanted to be, there's nothing but these three things. Opening day, very different than the way we first described it. There will be no testing on opening day. You say that again, we're not testing anybody on opening day. There will be a health check. There's always a health check. It will include a few additional things this year. There'll be another questionnaire that everybody will fill out when they speak to nurses. They'll have temperature check and the documents will be reviewed, just to make sure we have them all. If you are dropping your camper at TY. And you've done it before, you know, we put out the greatest brunch in the world on opening. Our good friend Stu Stein puts that out and it's awesome. It's not happening this year, folks. We owe you a brunch. You're going to stay in your cars. You're gonna drive through camp. There's gonna be a place where I'm gonna wave at you and a nurse is gonna wave at you and maybe Stu Stein will be happy and throw a bagel into your car window or something like that, or the work on that, but. We're not doing the whole thing. Your camper's gonna get out. They're gonna go through the through this test, through these tests, this very simple testing, not physical testing. And and then they'll say goodbye to you and our staff will help move your luggage and you're going to drive out of camp. We just don't have the. We don't have the bandwidth to check all your vaccine cards. We just don't. So we're not going to. We want, we gotta focus on your kids and not you. So you're gonna leave, if your camper is flying in or your camper at, we're taking the bus, taking the bus in the airport, whether they're flying or they're just taking the bus, they will go through this process at the airport. Okay, wanna make sure everybody's good before they get on those buses. All right. I know some CJ parents are thinking right now, my kid's flying up from CJ and they're not vaccinated. When are they gonna get the test? How are they gonna get their test? I think Walter's on the call somewhere. I know you said he was coming. We are working with CJ so that those tests for unvaccinated campers at CJ. Will get a test within seventy two hours beforehand and the results will be sent to Telluride. Already thought of that, folks. All right, so that's opening day. What's happening during week one? And by week one, we mean Wednesday to hopefully Tuesday of the next week, hopefully. Depends on a few things. We're gonna have some really strict rules. In camp and the goals of these strict rules are just in case any COVID sort of snuck into camp. That we keep it contained, just in case, extra layer of protection. You've probably heard of this idea of the Swiss cheese model. Where there's a lot of different layers of mitigation going on and there's still holes in Swiss cheese and. Once you, you know, put enough layers in there, you're sort of keeping things out. So here's what's gonna happen in this first week. All activities are gonna be held by the hood. The hood is term we've always used. It's a group of thirty six campers. We think the New York State Department of Health used that number because they like the Jewish people. And what it really means for us is three bunks, in some cases, four bunks of campers, who will do all their activities together. Massachusetts released their guidelines two weeks earlier and they said their coach were twelve people that could never mix. So again, happy that we waited a little bit longer. It's nicer for our kids to have more people to hang out with. All of activities will be held outside or in our very well-ventilated pavilions. All of our meals for the entire summer, by the way, will be served in large tents by hood. We just purchased fifty thousand dollars worth of tents. We know that air is the most important thing on earth when it comes to COVID. There will always be this week one, at least six feet of distance between each of the houdin. So there might be some camp gatherings, but this, each group of thirty six will be sitting. With some distance from every other group of thirty six. All campers and staff will have their temperatures taken morning and evening and checked for any other symptoms. And yes, my friends, all campers and staff who wear masks during this period of time. Except during meals, swimming, sleeping and physical activity where masks are uncomfortable. So if they're outside playing sports or they're doing recoup, everybody loves to dance at TY, they can take their masks off if they're uncomfortable. That's week one. On the Sunday, June twenty seventh. And this is really the only time where we're gonna see a distinction between vaccine and vaccinated campers, right? We're not, there's no other distinction of what they can or can't do in camp. All unvaccinated campers will receive a PCR test. We're expected to get those results in about forty eight hours. They're all gonna come back negative. We're really confident about that. We're only gonna have about ten or fifteen kids who aren't vaccinated in the first place. They're all gonna come back negative. And after that happens. According to the state, we can create what's considered a camp household. The entire camp will be considered a household. And for the remainder of the summer, the full program of Telluride will run. The mitigation practices like outdoor programming and the mini group size for certain activities. Our masks will not be necessary and campers from different groups can fully interact with each other. This will allow us to run our elective program. This will allow those fun recoup nights. This will allow for so much of the magic of Telluride that's actually happened this summer. And we are really, really happy to be at this point. This is a great place to be. We're still, as I said, we're gonna keep things outside. We're never gonna put four hundred kids in that in that hot sweaty bate on this summer. That's bad. That's bad news. Again, you know, air is just critical. So beyond week one, still some mitigation in place, limiting group sizes. What are we gonna do? How are we gonna continue to monitor things? Even though we've achieved no positive cases during that first week. So all campers and staff and other temperatures taken morning and evening every single day of the summer. You've all had that a million times as you walked into stores now. We will be purchasing lots of thermometers and teaching our staff how to click that button and record temperatures. Campers and staff wash hands multiple times throughout the day. We're currently installing new hand washing stations throughout camp. As I said earlier, we had donated to us about two thousand bottles of hand sanitizer. We're buying large. Sanitizer spray guns. So even though we know that phone mic transmission is not as big a deal as we originally thought in the pandemic, we're still keeping. We're still keeping things. I'm sorry, we're still keeping things clean. We're gonna teach your kids how to clean this summer. That has not been our strong point at Telluride. And this year, it's gonna have to be. First, we're gonna teach our staff how to clean. Then we're gonna teach your kids how to clean. And bunks are just gonna have to be a lot cleaner there before. And one thing to impress upon with your kids is they should not be sharing stuff this summer. In fact, I don't think I wrote this on here any anywhere, but if you're gonna send any snacks with your kids or in the one package you're allowed, send snacks up, please have everything individually wrapped, right? We don't want lots of kids putting their hands into bags of potato chips. So kosher and individually wrapped. All activities will be held outside and that is not possible. We'll have group, smaller groups inside, again, not gonna put four hundred people in in the. Catarroco. Continue to serve meals in our large wonderful sort of wedding tents. And anybody who is required to leave camp for camp-related business or a camper has to go to a clinic, has to wear a mask indoors. If symptomatic and tests will be isolated on the return pending PCR test results. What happens if we have a symptomatic camper? And that could be a vaccinated or unvaccinated symptomatic camper, by the way. They'll come to the infirmary. We're gonna have a special tent set up outside the infirmary so they don't have to walk inside. So in case there are kids in there with sprained knees or. You know, other things that happen at camp. They're not interacting with them. They'll get a rapid COVID nineteen test right away and then a PCR test, which will take a little bit. Longer to get back. And here are things that are going to happen. Camp will be isolated and cared for by one of our healthcare professionals. We have hired a great team of. Nurses this summer. We're also working with some some teledoc service as well. They'll be cared for, but they'll also be isolated. The camper will need to be picked up within twenty four hours by a parent or guardian using private transportation if they live within driving distance of camp. Or agree to be isolated until those negative PCR results come back. So we know if people were flying and we were very nervous about this particular line and the state was a little fuzzy about this. You know, we don't expect an Israeli family to fly in and take their their child back on a private jet. They don't want people who are potentially positive going on public transportation. So we will take care of people who are local. Back in two thousand nine during H one N one, we had a hundred and fifty cases of H one N one at TY and. All the local families took their kids home and all the kid people weren't weren't local. We took care of them until they until they got better. Unvaccinated campers and staff who are in contact with a person who's tested positive should expect to quarantine. The state is not requiring unvaccinated people to quarantine, but there will be a quarantine period while we're waiting for their tests to come back. And as per New York State guidelines, this is critical. We will have to inform New York State Department of Health that we have a. Positive case and they will start contact tracing. Couple of pieces about the contact tracing, especially for unvaccinated kids. We're gonna keep very careful lists of every activity kids are in, which they were in for different things, but there's still interaction that takes place, right? We're giving kids some freedom. There's some kofesh, there's some kids who are hanging out with each other. If, and I really believe this is not going to happen, but if there's a positive case. That camper is gonna be asked who they've been in contact with. And it's gonna be real important that they're honest. If they've been hanging out with somebody, maybe you're gonna call Fash, which is free time. It's gonna be real important, even if they broke the rules and snuck out at night or something. Here's where the health and safety thing is the most important thing in the world. Here's where the health and safety thing is the most important thing in the world, and that they give us that information. There are still some question marks about, you know, how that contact tracing will go and what the state will require in terms of how quarantine would be while awaiting results if they're, if they've been in contact with a positive person. Trips. I will be very honest, this has been the bane of our existence for the past six months is trying to figure out trips and every time we figure them out, something changes in what we're allowed to and not allowed to do. So the State Department of Health has told us unequivocally that kids can knock out, go out on trips and be in contact with other non-fully vaccinated people. So some of our trips in the past have had kids staying at campgrounds where there are other people who are there. Many of you know about our biking trip. It's wonderful. There are just no campgrounds that we can do a safe biking route to. At this point, we're still looking into it. And where they could stay there and not be in contact with other people, that there's no way to know if they have been vaccinated or unvaccinated. Same thing, we're not sending you to New York City, we're not sending you to Buffalo, we're not sending you to Washington DC this year. So we have been scrambling to figure out trips and I know this is a huge question, so I appreciate, a lot of you have written about this recently. We are in contact with our kayaking company about how many people in how many different shifts we can send, because that, those campgrounds are separate from everybody else. So we're trying to figure out how do we get, we have two hundred and thirty kids between our yachad year and our hajraha year that would be going on these trips and we are trying to figure out how we can get them there. We are going to be offering some out-of-camp experience and some in-camp experience that will probably be a performing arts-based experience. And I just, I beg you for a little bit of patience on this, hopefully just two more days to we're able to send out something. But if you're, if you were worrying about going out and buying biking gear, that's not something you should run out and buy. Maybe we'll need some river shoes, but, but we are, we're, we're close to knowing the answer to this question. So, so thank you for your patience. I was told there's a whole bunch of parents wanting to know what's up with the trips. We wanna keep, we wanna keep her safe and we gotta follow these rules. Communication, how are we gonna be in touch with you? We certainly hope that you're not, we're not gonna tell you anything about COVID because all's gonna be great. But we will keep you informed throughout the session. So when we get through that first round of testing and we get to that forty-eight hour mark and we get those test results back and if they're all negative, you know, I can't wait to, I'm gonna call every one of you and shout at you so that tell you that we're in great shape. But no, we're gonna email you, we're gonna let you know what's going on. If anybody camper, tech, staff tests positive while in our care, everybody here will know and everybody will know what we're doing about it. There's not gonna be any secrets. Any parent with a camper in close contact with a COVID nineteen case will be notified directly regarding the status of your child. And if a camper needs to be kept overnight in the health center for any non-COVID nineteen related reason, we'll make sure that you're notified as well. And we'll continue to use email for other communication during the summer. I, I do, I just wanna apologize, you know, some of you were not getting email for a couple of weeks. I've learned something about, it's called a DNS thing. I don't even know what it means. But for some reason, our email is being blocked by some email providers just over like the last three weeks. We believe that's been solved and you should all be getting email flowing now. Apologize for that. It's some technical glitch, which like, I don't understand. So that is how we'll communicate with you. I wanted to make sure you know who some key people are. You'll need to know who they are this summer and all this will be information we sent to you. Eventually, we saw our full-time staff already, myself, Mac, Isabel, Noah. The Tell You Who It at YoungJudaith.org email address that, just so you know, that gets, that gets divvy up between all of us and we'll, we'll get that email. Our main phone number is already ringing up at camp and ringing in our offices. And three other people who I wanna make sure you know who they are and they are not technically on staff yet, but they are beginning to answer emails and already talking to some parents. One is Karen Adams, who's our health center director, Russell Burner, who's our mental health professional, our social worker, and Amy again, who's our parent liaison. You can reach all of them through the same email address and through the same phone number. Don't call them yet. They're doing their own jobs until they come to camp, but camper, carrot, tell you who to dot org. So if you have a question about, you know, a mental health question, you wanna speak to Russell, who was just the best in the world. And every kid wants to talk to him because it's awesome. I grew up, he was like one of, like a little bit older than me and YoungJudaith, but he's the coolest guy. Now I just think he's the coolest, wonderful guy. He, he's there to talk to kids. He's setting up a, a special room this summer for kids to sort of chill out a little bit. We know that for some of your kids, you know, this has been a year where they haven't been around a lot of other people and they might need a little, little downtime. Buying some special things to go in that room. Karen's been with us for many years as our health center director and she's gonna be leading a, a team of some great new nurses this summer. And Amy is our parent liaison. She's the one to call and say, you know, I don't want, I don't want you to tell my kid I'm checking on them, but I wanna check on them. So you call Amy and Amy goes and finds the, the counselor and says, hey, how's so-and-so doing? She gets that answer back and she calls you back and he doesn't even know they've been, you've been checking. Or anything else you need as a parent, or if you just need a little like parent-to-parent talk, speak to Amy. I know her real well. She's also my wife. She's raised some good girls. I'm, I'm pretty proud of them. So that is some key Tell You Who To Staff that you should know. And there are twenty-two, twenty-eight days until we go home. And if you're in Israel right now, you're probably asleep, but it's twenty-seven days. And so that is the end of this part of the presentation. I have a few other things I wanna go over that are not directly related to this. So I just wanna take a look in the chat for a moment. I see people are planning on having coffee together. That's great.
David, we have quite a few questions.
Okay.
That I'd like to send your way.
Sure.
Awesome. So I'm gonna try and get as many of them as, as they came up in the chat, but if I missed one or one that goes unanswered, please feel free to follow up and throw that back into the chat. So the first question was, does TY follow New York State immunization requirements for school entrance and attendance?
Um, we follow, actually ours are stricter. We require all vaccinations. Actually, not a hundred and sure of everything New York State schools require. We do require all vaccinations. It's in the parent guide and we actually have no exceptions to any of those vaccination requirements.
Awesome. So moving on to the next question, can you talk a little bit about how opening day health check is gonna be handled for kids flying in?
Great, thanks. So we're gonna do the questionnaire and the, we're sending one of our nurses to the airport. And they'll have an opportunity at the airport to do the questionnaire, to do the, the temperature check. And, and then, and then they'll come to camp and the rest of the intake they'll do while, while at camp. They'll be real quick at the airport. And, and this is, this is real quick. And we, we, by the way, always do a questionnaire when kids first come in. We don't know, like, are you feeling okay? Anything else that we need to know? It's just the first time we go to the airport instead.
Okay, so another question about getting dropped off. If you have two kids going to Sprout, how does drop off work? Are they at the same location?
Thank you. That's a great question. And in past years, we've been able to run a bus when we've started on the same day. We're not this year because of COVID. We understand it's gonna be a little bit of a challenging day. Sprout, you'll drop off earlier in the day. They, I'm not sure if they've released already their schedule and their signups for drop off yet. I'm not sure where they're at with that. We will have an online scheduling program coming out in the next week or so where you'll be able to pick a time so to drop off and we'll expect that if you're dropping at Sprout, they're also doing a quick drop and run thing as well, right? They're not doing a whole program. So it's drop and run at Sprout. I believe you're not even going into camp. I believe you're doing it outside of camp in a parking lot. Drop and run, get right back on Route eighty-four, hop across eighty-four over to, to ninety-seven and make your way up to TY. It's an hour forty-five minutes and you'll probably get to us mid-afternoon.
Alright. If all kids, if all kids in the HUG are vaccinated, are they still required to wear masks during the first week?
Great question. And this specifically, I wanna speak to the Geshare parents on the call. So for those of you who don't know, Geshare is our brand-new program. Kids are forty-five campers will be at TY for two weeks and they're flying off to Israel for three and a half weeks. And we're so excited for them to be going. That's been on and off again three times in the past few weeks. But they're going and we're very excited they're going. And they all have to be vaccinated to go to Israel. So we're expecting all to be vaccinated camp, though not sure the timing on when all of them getting their vaccinations, but everybody in Geshare is vaccinated. We expect that they'll be able to do things without their masks on. It is doubtful that with the fifteen-ish or so kids that aren't vaccinated, that there'll be another HUG that has no vaccinated campers in it. We're certainly not, here's what we're not gonna, we're not gonna create a HUG of vaccinated kids, right? One of the thing, our goal is to not stigmatize anybody. So that's not gonna happen.
Great. So if a camper were to test positive, would they not be allowed to return once they test negative?
Um, I, I believe that is, that is a state of New York question and I believe the timing is changing on that. I wonder if Joel is on the phone or on the call, if Joel knows what the latest amount of time there is, once somebody tests negative to be able to come back into the community. Joel Ackles, were you out there?
I, I don't think Joel's on the call with us at this point, but we can definitely reach out to him and get some more information.
Great. We'll get back to that. I believe they recently changed the amount of time and that's why I don't wanna give a definitive answer on this.
Um, great. So the next question is, I kind of, I'm gonna put two questions in one here. Once you know what the trip options are, when will campers find out what trips they'll be on? Is there going to be a choice still and do they still need to bring a sleeping bag if there's not going to be any camping?
Okay, so, great question. There is very likely to be a choice. We're still working on what those choices will be. Also, if your camper's coming for four weeks, they at some point will go to Gimel, which is our sort of campsite across the street. And we do expect our campers over there, so they'll still sleep out one night, most likely in the first block, but could go into the second block. So yes, send them, some of them, I know some CJ parents have questions about this because they're leaving for CJ earlier. So I, I understand why that's a concern. You don't have four weeks, you have two weeks. So our goal is to have out whatever choices there are end of this week, very, very next week, turn them around very quickly. So when you get that form, fill it out right away. And then, and then let you know people's assignments. We're really, really waiting on our kayak and company to tell us what are, what the capacities are. That, that, that's me being totally transparent with you.
Um, so a question that's going a little bit back to what we were just talking about, about maybe someone coming a little late. If a camper tests positive in the seventy-two hours prior to entering, are they able to enter late once they've quarantined?
Yeah, that's the, right, that's again, what we, we need to understand what the length of time is once they test positive before they can re-enter the community. I don't wanna answer that right now because I believe that has just changed in New York State, so I wanna give you the right answer on that. But in theory, if a, if a camper tests positive right before they come to camp, and I think in the past it's been ten days, then after that period of time, they should be able to come to camp.
Great. Can kids interact with kids outside of their HUG during kofesh during the first week?
Uh, not without a mask and socially distanced. So we're going to create some pretty, you know, it's not gonna be the same kind of kofesh. So it is likely kofesh will be in areas with your, with your HUG during that first week. It doesn't mean you won't see somebody walking along and we're going, again, parents, we need you to impress upon your campers that they, these are rules they need to follow. They need, need to follow. So we get through that first week, we're golden, but we need to get through the first week.
Yeah. If a vaccinated camper is exposed at camp, will they be tested and will they need to quarantine?
Um, the Department of Health tells us they do not need to be tested or quarantined if they have been vaccinated. And so that is our current answer on that. Now, if they're symptomatic, that's a different story. We will tell the parents though, and I would imagine some parents will say, you know, I'd still rather you tested my kid. And then, of course, we'll do it. And by the way, we have onsite testing throughout the entire summer, both PCR and rapid tests.
Great. Can first-time families visit camp before opening day to be able to see camp?
Um, I would, please send me an email separately. You know, if you're, if you're all vaccinated and we can find time, we're not interacting with anybody else who's already up there, we could probably find a way to do that. But please just email me directly.
Great. Do you want campers to quarantine slash keep away from groups before camp starts? For example, eighth grade graduation on the twenty-second of June.
Right. So certainly unvaccinated campers should be extraordinarily careful before they leave for camp. And you'll see that in the, in the question, everybody's filling out. So if you're not vaccinated, you should be extremely careful. I'm not gonna tell people if they should go to their graduations or not. And, you know, avoid large parties. Everybody should be avoiding large parties. Everybody should be avoiding large gatherings inside unmasked. We're, we're very honest that we can't control what you do before you come, but we're asking you to avoid those things, vaccinated, unvaccinated, but that's, unvaccinated campers specifically should not be in places, in crowds of people unmasked. I imagine most of these graduations will have masking requirements as well. So follow them.
Yeah. Can you talk a little bit more about the first week versus the second week in block one? And also when we spoke, mentioned that in the first block, there'd be an overnight experience on the camp property. Can you comment on that, please?
The, those are dates we're still trying to work out right now. I know, and thank you, Deborah, and we spoke about that yesterday. We're trying to see how many groups we can get out to Gimel in the first week after the, those first few days because they can't really share tents during that first week. Vaccinated, vaccinated campers can't share tents during that first week. So it leaves, it gives us seven days and like ten groups. So it's really, it's really just a numbers game for us of how many people we can get to go to Gimel for that, for that sleep out. I can't give a guaranteed answer. I have working on it, though. That's our goal.
Um, will all Geshar kids be in one HUG even though there are more than thirty-six?
They will be in two Hugim. Because there's more than thirty-six. If, and we're expecting they are all vaccinated, those two groups that are technically two Hugim can interact with one another fully. So that's where I'll leave that.
And will the Geshar kids be going on any trips during the first two weeks?
Um, not a long, not big trips. Again, we also hope to get them out to Gimel. We hope to get everybody out to Gimel or on, on a rafting trip in the first, in that first block. One of those two things. I, I don't think everybody will get to do both. And that's really up to Mac because he's the one that has plans. So he's cursing. I was like, wait, we're doing all, okay.
Do campers have to wear masks while sleeping?
No.
Great.
And windows, windows wide open in those bunks.
Absolutely. Okay, so we have a few, a few non-COVID related questions to go over also. Do you wanna do those right now or?
I just wanna answer Lisa Stein's question. Tell me more about how Stu Stein prepares the world's best buffet lunch. He never cooks at home. So thank you, Lisa, for asking that question. If people don't know Stu Stein, Stu has been running our kitchen for many years. Fabulous. When I started this job fourteen years ago, the former director said if there's one thing you, you need to do, it's fix the food, because the food's awful, Tell You Who It. And it took me a few years to get there. It took me, brings Stu Stein and then a whole other team of great chefs and kitchen people to make that happen. We have good food. But Lisa, here's the secret. Stu doesn't make any of that food. So it's the people he brings in. He's good at hiring and managing, but he can't cook. Okay, so, um, yeah, I'll answer the rest of the questions that are on here real quickly. Shoot, you're great at this, Mac.
Sure. Okay. So given the current climate, will there be Shomrim guarding camp?
Right. That was one of the things I did wanna talk about. My know security is on the minds of people as it should be. It's been on our mind for years, though. It's not new to be on our minds. And just three, four years ago, we started having twenty-four-seven armed security at camp. So we are continuing that and we hate to have to do that, but we are continuing to do that. We've also, just in the past year, upgraded our communication system in camp and our Wi-Fi system in camp. So we have protocols for how people throughout camp can contact each other in an emergency. We've also had, which has been really, really interesting, maybe controversial but interesting, is we have invited the Sullivan County SWAT team to do their training at Tell You Who It. And so the last few weeks, they've been coming in and they're getting to know the place. We hope to never see them except for these trainings and for the barbecue we've invited to them, we invited them to at the end of the summer. But we want folks to know, those folks, emergency responders, to know their way around Tell You Who It in case of an emergency. I should also say that all of our security personnel are, are local law enforcement. And so everybody in the area, everybody in that part of New York knows who guards Tell You Who It. And that's very important because, you know, optics are also a piece of security. We put in video, videos at our gates, so nobody We put in video, videos at our gates, so nobody can come in without, um, without being cleared through, through video or through the guard being at the gate. And again, I said it's 24/7 security. Um, and we're in the process right now of applying to some homeland security grants to, to continue to improve our security. On top of that, we're doing training with our staff around security as we do every summer, but increasing that. We do know this is a tense time.
Yeah. Um, sorry, I lost my space here. Just quick, okay. Uh, are staff required to be vaccinated?
Yes, our staff is required to be vaccinated. We do have one or two health exceptions. Um, in those cases of exceptions for our staff, there are strict protocols. They will be continuing to wear masks when they're with the staff. Um, they will not be able to be off campus. Our staff's able to be off campus, um, in very, in limited ways. Um, but our unvaccinated staff won't be leaving camp at all. And like I said, when our staff is together, um, they'll have to wear, wear masks, even the rest of the staff won't be. Uh, right now it's one person. Um, and again, it's medical reasons.
Um, can you tell us where we can find forms? Uh, and if, uh, and how a kid can find the bus at the airport when they arrive?
Okay, great. Um, well, forms, to find forms, uh, you're gonna log into your Camp and Touch account. If you don't know how to get there, if you go to our website at telluride.org and you click down that contact button, um, or next steps button, you'll see login to my account. You just click right on there. You can log in. All your forms will be there. It tells you how you're doing with your forms. And by the way, if you've already done forms and you haven't, and they're still showing they haven't been approved yet, don't take that personally. Take that, as I said at the beginning of the fact, there's 3,000 forms coming in right now, and just people have to go through them. It just takes time. Um, and then the second part of the question, how can they find people at, how can they find their way at the airport? I'm not going to answer that at the moment, um, because we're making some changes to how airport works because of COVID. And we're going to send those directions out, but your, your camper will surely have information of where to go as soon as they get off the plane.
Absolutely. And if a child is unvaccinated but has antibodies, does that make any difference?
Um, so according to the state, it makes a difference if they've had COVID in the last, uh, 60 days. Otherwise, it is, it is, does not count in terms of the state. And therefore those, the policies that we're following, we do know some of your children, unfortunately, have COVID. And some of them are, you're smoking, they're really bad also. Um, unfortunately, we do still have the same requirements around, documentation around what we need to do if there is, um, with testing and what we need to do with, um, in case they're in contact with somebody who has COVID.
Great. Um, will we know what bunk our campers are in before camp?
Um, most likely not. Um, most likely not. We are working on it earlier than we usually do. And I will say, because I know a lot of people are concerned about this, that, um, you know, in, in previous years, we've always tried to balance bunking our campers with their best friends for life and also mixing it up. So we have campers coming from four different summer camps as well as over 50 brand new campers this summer, which is really awesome. This summer, we know a lot of your kids haven't seen their friends in two years, and we're giving a special, special emphasis on keeping best friends together. I just want to give you two pieces of advice. If your camper really wants to be with another camper, one is make sure you filled out that bunk form. If you haven't filled out the bunk form, fill it out tonight. Uh, please, we don't want to call you the day before. Um, you need to fill that out tonight. Secondly, do not put do not bunks. If you really want your, your camper to be with their best friend, don't use the do not bunk. Cause that creates the, the big mess for us. Cause we've got people who do not want this person, but then they want this person who wanted the person they didn't want to be with. Uh, I will say there is nothing harder, well, we'll take COVID out of that, but there's been nothing harder in our, in our lives than figuring out bunking every year. Um, it is the bane of our existence is trying to get this right. And inevitably, we have a few people who are upset at the end of the day. And we really try not to do that. So, and the third thing around bunking, don't request six people. And don't do one of these, we know how they work. We know how some of you guys work with these chains. And then we'll request these people and they request these people and they request these people. The best thing to do, if you've got, you know, two best friends and there's three of you, is you all request each other. Don't request other people. That just gets to be a big mess. We try really, really, really hard with the bunking. We're not trying to make anybody miserable, but it is, um, it is like harder than a Rubik's Cube, figuring the whole thing out. And again, one of the things we're really excited about, we have so many brand new campers coming this summer. And I know you're going with your besties and you'll get to be with them, but please, please come with an open mind about meeting some of the brand new people who are coming to camp this summer. Cause they're, they might be the most awesome new friends you're about to meet. Okay.
Um,
A, a, any other burning questions? We're getting close to nine, and I do want to make sure to go over a few other things, um, that are critical.
One more question that's specifically COVID related. Uh, campers going from TY to Sprout for AT+ plus. Will they need to be tested first? And what if they're fully vaccinated?
Great. I am so glad you asked that question because I asked that question to Sprout Lake just yesterday. Yes, you will still need to be tested. That goes for people going to Sprout Lake for, for Hadrha Plus. And also for going for Bo Green Extreme later in the summer. You still need to be tested. Sprout Lake is requiring everybody tested, including vaccinated campers, which is smart because they've got a, you know, much younger population, and we are working with diligent, uh, to make sure those tests happen and they'll be sent over to Sprout Lake. Okay. Let me go through a few more things and then what we'll do is I can stay on and take a few more questions at the end. But I do want to make sure to, um, to go through a few things. One is, um, I mentioned measles before. Even in the light of COVID, there is still concern about measles, especially up in Sullivan County, um, where there had, there was an outbreak two years ago. You might recall, you might know that where we're located, there's a very, very large ultra orthodox summer community. And there's been massive measles outbreaks in that community. Um, and so they've had some pretty strict rules around measles vaccinations. And so we need from you, not, if you filled out the thing like online, where you typed in the measles, the dates, we, we need from you, the actual doctor's form that shows when the, the, um, the MMR was. So if you can track that down, please do, they're gonna come in and they're gonna sit there going through our records to see that everybody has measles back, MMR, measles vaccination. I went and got another one last year because I still didn't have the record for when I was a kid. So like they're checking everybody. Uh, so that's measles. Um, second thing, we talked about security. Third, you know, I want to press upon you again about the forms. Please don't email us to tell us that you are working on it. Just, just, just get them in as soon as you can. Um, we'll, we'll start having a, a bigger office staff in about a month or so, and you'll start getting emails about missing forms. Um, again, they, they haven't all been, they take time to come in, um, put in what you can. If you have a vaccine card, that's only half done right now. Wait till it's all done and then upload it, okay? With both, with both shots on it, that would be great. Um, and some of you still have a few, some outstanding, um, balances. We need those cleared up. If you have a payment plan and you've been talking and working with Isabel on that, no worries. She knows what's going on. But we do need, as a nonprofit organization and running camp this summer, we, we want to pay our staff and pay for all the food and everything like that. So we need you to, this is the time, we're past eight, and so please make your final payment. You can go online and do that. Um, and if you need to talk to us about it, please do. Um, I, I talked about Sprout Lake and CJ testing and, um, one last thing I want to share with you. I want to share one more document with you and, and teens, if you're on the phone also, I want you to pay attention now. Um, we've talked a lot about what to bring to camp. There was a packing list online. I just want to quickly review and I'll send this out to you as well. I want to talk about eight things you don't need to bring this summer. Um, and I want you to really listen closely to this because this is what makes or breaks the summer. Number one, your closed minds, leave those home. Your, you, many of you have been locked away for a year. Come with your mind wide open. You're meeting new people. You're exploring new activities, new ideas. It's going to be awesome. Language, demeaning language. We are creating a diverse group of Jewish young people, and we welcome everybody. We welcome people. It has nothing to do with, with sex, with race, with sexual identity, with gender identity. We have no room for any language or behavior at camp that excludes anybody. Um, and we really, and especially after the year we've just had, we want to make sure we are the most welcoming community of young Jewish people. By the way, I don't know if you know this, everybody, we're the only teen Jewish summer camp in the world. Nothing, this doesn't exist anywhere else. So this is the place to create this exemplary community. Denial of the rights of other, everybody has the same rights at camp to be treated respectfully and to give their consent for anything that involves their bodies, property or reputations. And we'll talk more about consent when we're at camp. Obviously, it's a very important topic. Um, alcohol and illegal drugs. I, I just want, I want to be as clear as possible about this. And I have to say, unfortunately, we've had years where kids have, for some reason, didn't read this part. You go home immediately. You go home immediately. Right? That is any kind of alcohol, any kind of illegal drugs, any kind of electronic smoking device, even if it's just for tobacco, you're going home immediately. So just don't bring it. And why on earth would you want a room this summer after you haven't had a summer last year? So don't do something stupid and bring something stupid with you that you don't need for two, four, six weeks or at all. But certainly not at camp. So I just want to be a strong, parents, I ask you, you know, to check in with your, with your, with your teens about this before they leave. I unfortunately have had to send campers home, and it is devastating to end a summer early for, for, for any of these reasons. Please don't send us any non-kosher food. Got a nice little Jewish community. We know many of you aren't kosher at home. I'm not kosher at home all the time, but, um, in camp, we want everybody to feel comfortable. So make sure you've got a hector on there. If you don't know what that means, contact us. We'll help you know what you can bring or we can. We don't deny kids snacks. We like snacks. I love snacks. Um, but we need you to, they need to be kosher. Um, disrespect for staff. Uh, we have the best, most hardworking staff in the world. I am so excited. That's what Max Morgan has hired these people. They are mostly people who are up at camp or they're Israelis. Many Israelis were just like, they were little in the army last week. Um, they're, they're, um, just the most idealistic, greatest people. We don't pay them a whole lot of money to be at camp. And, um, so, so just respect and love for these people. I am still in touch with many of my counselors when I was a camper at Telluride. And you don't want to bring too much stuff. You just don't need it. And you know, some people want to bring a plastic thing, that's fine. But you don't need a whole lot of stuff. We're not a fancy camp. You don't need to bring expensive clothing. You don't need lots of electronics. We're gonna keep your phone with you, for you, if we have, if you bring it with you. If you don't need to bring it, don't bring it. You get a break from social media. You get a break from Snapchat. You get a break from texting. You get a break from Zoom. I'm hoping this is one of my last Zoom calls for a long time. I can't wait to, I'm gonna delete Zoom from my computer. Um, you get a break from all that stuff. You just don't need it. Um, no devices that connect to wifi. I know there's a couple of people who've got some medical things to talk about in terms of devices. We'll deal with those. But you just don't need them. We'll put all that stuff in the safe for you. Okay? People wear nice things on Shabbat on Friday night, but they don't go crazy. They don't go crazy for it. So these are things just not to bring, just so we have a nice, welcoming, safe and diverse teen community. Folks, we've had 74 years of Telluride. Um, next summer will be our 75th summer. And, um, we are able to create this incredible, um, community because of the relationship between staff, campers and parents. And so, you know, if, if you, if your teens are on the call, please go over some of the things we talked about. If you have questions, please contact me. Um, uh, as I said at the beginning of the call, if these procedures that we're putting into place don't work for you, if you feel like we're not being cautious enough or being overly cautious, and you make a decision to do something else this summer, we will certainly understand that. We tried very hard to find a, 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 a safe ground and also a meaningful, fun ground that would allow us to create really the TY experience this summer. So 28 days, 28 days after what has been really a very difficult, very difficult time. We're going home. We're going home to TY. And, um, most of our campers who have been there before will tell you it feels like home. And I know your homes have been amazing for these past 14, 15, 16 months. Uh, but it's time, and for parents on the call, enjoy the break. Um, I'm, I know many of you have written to me, please take my kids now. Um, I'm sorry I couldn't do that earlier, but, um, we're, we're taking now, take a little break, little breather. It'd be good for everybody. Um, and the last thing I, I will say, um, I, we are still able to open camp this summer because of the generosity of so many people. Last summer, when we had to close camp, we received from parents, many of you on the call right now, donations over $200,000 worth of tuition back to camp. We received donations of over $200,000 from our alumni. We received grants from foundations and money from the great taxpayers of the United States of America through PPP grants. Um, it has allowed us to get to this moment and still be around. When it was this date last year, I didn't know if we'd survive. And we did because of the generosity of so many, so many people in the Jewish community. Um, so thank you to everybody who, who has donated. We are still, uh, trying to dig ourselves out of a hole. We borrowed a lot of money also to stay in business, and we're doing a lot of upgrades this summer. We bought $50,000 worth of tents. We just, uh, we repaved all of our courts, so we have great outdoor space. We're redoing our entire food service, and we were very, very fortunate to get a matching grant from the Howard Brinspoon Foundation of, um, $75,000 if we raised, um, double that amount. So already, um, alumni and parents have donated to us almost $70,000. We're just about halfway there. And if anybody would like to help us out, um, as we come back to camp this summer, all of you are in different positions. But if you're able to, your grant, your, your funds will be increased by 50%. And we greatly appreciate as we move forward into this, into this coming summer. So I think, I don't like to ask for money, but I did, I do want to let you know, like, we've gotten here through generosity and we're expecting, um, to continue on with the generosity of so many families. So with that said, it's a long evening. Um, I'm actually in our New York City office tonight. I'm about to pack it up and throw it in the back of my car. So, cause it is time to go to camp, everybody. So thank you all. Um, you know, I, I'm happy to go through any other questions at camp in the chat. Mac's gonna read them to me, and otherwise I'll say goodnight and, uh, look forward to, um, to hearing from you. So thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Well, tough.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't get to see all your faces. I can't wait to watch the recording. I don't think it shows the faces. Mac, anything else in the chat that I should be asking?
Uh, there's one, one question about mail and packages. If you could just tell us a little bit about what's going on with mails and packages.
Yeah. So, um, I have to say, you guys, you guys, by you guys, I mean, you parents send the most packages in the world. We're the only camp that doesn't limit packages. And, um, if you all use Smile, by the way, on Amazon, we would, we wouldn't be asking anybody for any money because we would make so much money on Smile. Um, but this year, you know, we're, we're, we're just trying to mitigate everything that we can. One of the ways we're doing that is trying to decrease the number of deliveries coming into camp. So on the other hand, though, some of you have shoes you need to send up because your camper forgot them. Or you, they really need a couple of, um, of grandma's homemade, whatever. Um, so we're asking you to one package this summer, not 20, not every day, one package this summer. Um, mail is fine. Letters are great. Um, we do have a system. If you're new to Telluride, we have a system. If you're not, if you've been in the Young Day system, you know this already, there is a, um, an email program built into the Camp and Touch program where you can buy camper stamps. You email, you type in email the letter, uh, we get it, we print them out, we spend a lot, we spend a lot of money on paper. We give them to your camper, they read them, and you can also get what's called a fax back, which is a special sheet of paper that has a barcode on it. Your camper can write a letter back to you, put that into our fax machine, and somehow miraculously it shows up in your email as a PDF. So you can use that system as well. If you're looking for sort of a quicker turnaround on your, on your email, that system works, uh, just fine. And by the way, like, if, if there's an emergency package situation, just let us know, right? Where our goal isn't to make you unhappy. Um, our goal is just to reduce the number of packages coming into camp.
Great. Um, so then, uh, I'm just gonna kind of go off the questions that are coming into the chat right now. And then I'll get back to some of the ones that were asked a little bit earlier in the call, uh, if people still want them. So, uh, here we go. Tammy, after campers go on a trip biking or kayaking, will they need to be tested when they come back to camp?
Great question. And that really is the reason, you know, besides New York State not allowing us to, that we're keeping our kids who are at a camp away from other people. So that we don't need to go start the clock all over again, right? The goal was not to start the clock all over again. And so we're gonna limit things.
Awesome. Uh, so next question is, um, are campers allowed to bring Kindles even though they connect to a wifi?
Not if they connect to a wifi. Um, but please speak to me offline about that. I know that sometimes campers have like, they have to finish this book or school or something like that. Um, so we can certainly have that conversation. Um, I know some Kindles don't have a browser on them, so that's helpful. Um, but I don't know a whole lot about Kindles.
Great. Um, how are birthday celebrations? Great. How are birthday celebrations? What, what happens with birthday celebrations at camp and are their birthday celebrations on Gesher while they're in Israel?
So back to our good friends, Stu Stein again. I don't know if he's here. Stu Stein on this call? I know Lisa's on the call. We have a big birthday parade. There's a lot of noise. There's cake. There's banging on pots. And that bump will get a cake for their camper's birthday. That's exciting. We also allow kids to make a phone call or you to make a phone call home. So you could say hi on their birthday. That's great. You'll set that up with Amy, our parent liaison. I do not know the answer to birthdays on Gesher though, so I will, we'll write that down and we'll try to get an answer to you about Gesher birthdays.
Awesome. Can you talk a little bit about campers bringing meds to camp with them?
Great. Thank you. So we have asked, and I'm going to leave Gesher on the side for a second about this. We've asked all campers, all families to do their medication through Campers Pharmacy, which is the company we're working with this year. We work with different companies. With this, I know it's not the same company that Sprout or CJ or Midwest or Texas. We're all using different companies. New York State requires that campers cannot keep any medication in their bunks at all, except for an inhaler or a EpiPen if needed. Otherwise, it cannot be in the bunks. They do come and they do spot checks on this, actually. And so we require that we hold all the medications distributed by our nurses. We have found the way to do this in a, the safest possible way is to have all of the medication prepackaged by the same service. So we're using Campers Pharmacy. You get in touch with them. The information is in the parent guide, the, the link to their website. I think we're past the deadline or we're just at the deadline. So you do it all online. You send the prescription and they fill a 30 day prescription. Now, and then we get those little baggies with the time, the date, the time, and we're able to keep track of all their medication in the simplest way. Bringing bags of medication, bringing bottles of medication just means we have to repackage all of that. And you know, it's not as trusted as actually having the, the way it's done in hospitals, ways done in nursing homes, et cetera. So we know there are exceptions. There are exceptions because some of you are overseas or because of insurance things. You just need to contact us about that. So we can waive that if there's a legitimate exception. Otherwise, there's a hundred dollar fee if we have to repackage the medication. Gesher Complete people, we know this is a little bit of a different situation for you. We did ask you to use the system as well. We know it's a little funky though, because they're going to get a 30 day prescription and then they're going to be two weeks in camp and more than two more weeks in Israel. So if Gesher Complete, if that doesn't work for you, please let us know. Medication will be brought the first day. It'll still be dropped with us. We'll still prepackage those first two weeks worth and then we'll give your camper traveler, in this case, their medication back before they leave Israel. In Israel, they are administering their own medication.
Awesome. How many teens do we expect to be in camp this summer?
That's great. Great question. As of today, I think it was 318, which we're really excited about that. Number 45 of whom are leaving for Israel after the first two weeks. And I think another 20 or so who are staying only for the first two weeks. And the rest will be there for these four weeks. And I think we've got 90 campers staying for six weeks, which is awesome. And I know there's been questions, I even see here, and I'm getting constant questions. Can my camper stay if they're having a good time? Well, they're going to be having a good time. We will certainly, we're certainly in a position staff wise and space wise to keep hopefully all of them, if they wish to, if every single camper says they want to stay for six weeks, it'll be a little tough on us. But we, at this point, if your camper wants to stay with us.
All right. Looks like we're down to just a last few here. Can you talk a little bit, there's a few questions just kind of about packages and more so about shipping stuff like bedding and clothes and things like that for Gesher campers, especially when they're leaving to go to Israel, if they can send some of their stuff back home?
Great. I talked about this on the Gesher call the other night. We did realize that one funky thing is your kids are coming to TY, they need bedding, they need pillows and they don't need them when they get to Israel. So we want to help you ship those back home. And the best thing to do is to send a small duffel. And then, and you'll get this information from Isabel's office as well. You'll set up a pickup like the day after they leave UPS or FedEx will come. You'll already pay for it. You'll set it up with them and they will come. They'll have the ticket already. We'll slap that on their bag and it'll come back to you that way.
Awesome. And potentially our last question, but I'm not 100% sure. So maybe not. But what is dress code on Shabbat?
Ah, great. It is not all white. I, I know some camps have an all white Shabbat. I grew up in all white Shabbat. But our campers like to, as teenagers, like to individualize a little bit more than that. So most of our campers wear something nicer on Shabbat. Some of them get very dressed up. I don't really understand it. Most people just wear something a little bit nicer to bring to welcome in the Shabbat on Friday. Okay, so why don't we wrap up there? Unless there's, is there another burning question?
Not a burning question, but lately we would absolutely happily accept a donation of bedding. We have international staff that come every summer that we also need to get bedding for. And so we very much would welcome that if that's something you'd like to do.
I will tell you, it is a, it is a nice, a lot of our camp, unfortunately, some of our teenagers just leave their bedding at camp at the end of the summer. It is absolutely amazing how much bedding we pick up every year at the end of the summer. We have piles and piles of bedding. People wanted, if people want to leave it and we, we send it out to laundry and we'll use with international staff for the next summer. So it's great. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate it. We will, you know how to contact us. I imagine there'll be more questions when this is over and we'll try to get back to you as quick as possible. We're a little inundated at the moment. So sometimes it's taking us a little bit longer to get back to people, but we will get back to you and answer your questions. And I truly, truly hope that the, the direction we're heading feels really good for everybody and feels both safe and fun. So, goodnight, everybody.